Good morning. I call to order the County of Placer Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, May 8, 2012, at 9:00 a.m. We will begin this morning with the flag salute led by me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we will have the statement of meeting procedures read by our clerk, Anne Holman.
Welcome to the Placer County Board of Supervisors meeting of Tuesday, May 8, 2012. Agendas are available on the wall outside this meeting room. If you are here to speak on an issue not appearing on the agenda, you may do so during the public comment period. There's a three-minute time limit per speaker. The board is not permitted to take action on items addressed under public comment. When you speak, clearly state your name and address for the record. All items on the agenda will be open for the public to address before final action is taken. There's a three-minute time limit per speaker, which will be monitored by a timer on the podium. If there is a person speaking on behalf of a group with no other testimony from another member of the group, please identify yourself as such, and your time may be extended at the pleasure of the board. Keep in mind that the chairman has discretion of limiting the total discussion time on any item. If you are hearing impaired, we have listening devices available. It is requested that all pagers or cell phones be either turned off or put in the silent mode. Thank you for your participation and cooperation.
Thank you, Anne. Bless you. Now is the time for public comment. Anyone may address the board on items not on today's agenda. Please limit your comments to three minutes, since the time allocated for public comment is 15 minutes. If all the public comment cannot be heard within 15 minutes, we will take it up again at the end of the regular session and understand that the board is not permitted to take any action on items addressed under public comment. Thank you.
Good morning. My name's Diane Friedberg, and I live at 12660 Lake Shore North in Auburn. I am here today because I hope you noticed that in your halls here at the domes is artwork. And I hope you have spring fever, because that is the theme of the artwork. I am chairperson for the Placer Artists League, which is a program of Placer Arts. PAL is a group of active visual artists who meet regularly for camaraderie, artist presentations, paint-outs, demonstrations on a variety of media and art-related topics from award-winning professionals within the area of Placer County. Our charter is to support and educate local artists, encourage emerging artists, and provide opportunities for displaying and the sale of members' work. The artists range from novices to professionals working within a variety of 2D and 3D media. We date back to 1958, and we now thrive as a program of Placer Arts. And we provide resources to support the council's many fine arts programs and extending its reach to include a wide variety of fine artists in our county. Our membership is growing, and we currently have 90 members, of which we're very proud of. Our biggest fundraiser of the year is our annual fine arts competition, or our PAL Open Jury Show. This show draws artists from across the county and other counties, and is open to all artists. This year, we are excited, because the show will take place at the Bernhard Winery. And I want to take this opportunity to thank you for making this Bernhard Winery available for our annual fun event. We invite you to stop by the gallery to visit us during the show that takes place June 19 through July 6. Thank you.
Thank you. And wonderful art out there, Diane. Absolutely beautiful. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward under public comment and raise any issue that is not on today's agenda? All right, seeing none, I will close public comment, and we will move on to supervisors' committee reports. I see no supervisor committee reports. We will then move to our consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda have been recommended for approval by the County Executive Department. All items will be approved by a single roll-call vote, and anyone may ask to address consent items prior to the board taking action, and that item may be moved for discussion. Is there anyone who would like to move anything off the consent agenda today for discussion? Seeing none? Okay. This will be a roll-call vote.
Holmes.
Aye.
Duran.
Yes.
Wygant.
Yes.
Euler.
Montgomery.
Yes. All right. We will move to our first department item at this time. This will be item number five, Administrative Services Procurement. And Brett Wood will be presenting. Good morning.
Supervisors. Brett Wood with the Procurement Division. I'm here today with item 5A, which is a sole source, a request to renew a sole source agreement with Megabyte. This product has been used by Placer County since 1995 for the use of three different departments, and is currently being managed by the IT Division. Is also being represented today with Kathy Buchanan, the Deputy Director of IT. Our current agreement with Megabyte will expire on June 30th of this year, and they are the only provider that can provide the maintenance and services necessary for this product. With that, be happy to stand for any questions. We also have representatives from the departments if there are additional questions.
Supervisor Holmes.
Is it Kathy with a C?
With a K.
With a K, thanks.
Okay. I thought it was on Car Talk for a minute there. Supervisor Duran.
Yes. Thank you very much for bringing this forward. The 3.5 percent increase, is that just the cost of doing business, or is there anything different with the contract?
No, sir. That's the general, it's a consumer price index for last year. We try and tie our software contracts down to this type of increase. We try and tie them to the Consumer Price Index, or something similar, so we can measure that increase on a repetitive basis, so that we don't get hit with a 15 or 18 percent increase.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I see no other questions here. Brett and Kathy, thank you for bringing this forward. And Brett, I wanted to take this opportunity to thank you for all the work you've also done, particularly in aid to some folks up in Forest Hills, so thank you. What's the pleasure of the board? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries? Thank you very much. We will now move on to department item six through the Board of Supervisors. This is approving a proclamation declaring the week of May 20th to 26th, 2012, as National Public Works Week. Ken Graham presenting.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Ken Graham with the Department of Public Works. Today, we're asking you to approve a proclamation declaring the week of May 20th to 26th as National Public Works Week. Every May jurisdiction around the country celebrate the third week in May as National Public Works Week, and it's really to recognize all those people and all the infrastructure we have, and the people who provide those services every day. This year, the American Public Works Association and their 28,000 members have created their, selected the theme of "Public Works Creating a Lasting Impression." And so, we have hundreds of employees in the Department of Public Works and Facility Services who are providing a wide range of services: transportation, wastewater, facilities, and flood control. So I hope you can join me in celebrating our county employees providing infrastructure and services 24 hours a day, seven days a week, making sure people can turn on the tap knowing they're drinking safe water, they can flush the toilet knowing that that water's going to be taken away and addressed appropriately, or driving down our roads and making, knowing that they can do so safely if they obey all the traffic laws. And so with that, happy to provide this proclamation and ask for your board's approval of it.
Any questions or comments from the board? Supervisor Holmes.
Thank you, Ken. Appreciate all the hard work you do, and your department has always been receptive to any issues that I have, and you address them quickly and properly, and I appreciate that. So I just want to let you know that every day for Placer County and Supervisor Holmes is Public Works Day. There we go. Appreciate that.
I would like to echo Supervisor Holmes' words. I think your department is incredibly well-run, and the work that you do, that really is work that protects our community. I don't think people understand how much of what you do is really about protecting the community and making sure that we're safe, whether it's driving on the roads, going over bridges, or as you say, appropriately having wastewater move away. But is there anything in particular that you'd like to point out? I think the Forest Hill Bridge work has been pretty amazing, but there's things in other districts that have also been projects that are just phenomenal, and now's the time for you to kind of sing your own praises a little bit.
Well, we are very fortunate, whether on the project end, our bridges countywide, we're beginning a new construction of a new bridge over on Cook-Riolo Road in the Dry Creek area. We have a couple of bridges that will, your board will be looking to approve, a construction contract in the west area on Brewer Road, west of Lincoln, not to mention our Forest Hill Bridge, all the wide range of environmental improvement projects that we've been doing up in the Tahoe area. We're still very proud of how on Lake Forest, we restored the stream, bringing Kokoni salmon back upstream into Lake Forest, a very big success for us. We're looking forward also to restoring Snow Creek, which we got several million dollars to buy a piece of property. We're cleaning it up to bring back the natural ecosystem up there at Snow Creek on the north shore of Lake Tahoe. But it's not just about the projects, it's about the people who do the work each and every day, just the simple things, whether it's filling the potholes, whether it's driving the buses, keeping our vehicles up and operating. We can't do it without each and every one of them. We're very fortunate to have, and you're very fortunate to have, just a group of people that really do their best each and every day for our citizens.
Absolutely. Couldn't have said it better myself. Any members of the public want to make any comments on this? All right, seeing none, what's the pleasure of the board?
All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries? Thank you so much for all your great work.
All right, we will move to item seven, Community Development Resource Agency, Sheridan General Plan Update Opportunities/Work Program. And Jennifer, you have a new last name, and you're going to have to pronounce it for us.
It's Bias.
Bias. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And Jennifer Bias here for the Planning Division to present this item, the Sheridan Community Plan Update Work Program. And I put together a real quick, brief PowerPoint to go over with you. A little bit of background, why we're doing this community plan update. The Sheridan Community Plan is the second oldest community plan within the county. It was adopted in 1976, and census data that was used was 1970. So some of that data is out, pretty outdated, and over the last 30 years, and there's been quite a bit of change in West Placer, and in particular around the surrounding communities of Sheridan. The update will provide the plan with more accurate reflection of regional growth and resource protection. It'll also update state planning laws, local ordinance, and provide guidance for the community decision-makers. There's also some new opportunities to explore out in Sheridan with the 65 bypass, where the connection will be, and also with some upgrades that have recently been completed to the wastewater and water treatment plants out there. The existing community plan is 1,710 acres, or 2.67 miles. The population, according to the 2010 census, is 746 people. There's eight community plan designations. This is the current footprint of the community plan, most of which you will see is rural, large rural residential, but there's also some commercial and multifamily designations, industrial also. The work program options that we're here to present to you, and we have two basic questions, which is, should we proceed with the work program, as well as which options should we follow? The first option, 1A, is to proceed with the community plan update using the existing community plan boundaries, and we would look at potential land use changes within the current footprint of the plan. The second option, which is option 1A, would be to proceed with the update, looking at a modified boundary. And that modified boundary could include land use changes. And then, option 1C is, again, proceed with the update, looking at a modified boundary, and including fairgrounds relocation option. And the fairgrounds relocation alternative is just that, it's an alternative. It's an opportunity for the community and the county and the Planning Division to explore this particular option, and it would in no way commit the county to moving the fairgrounds out to a Sheridan location. This is just a particular alternative that county staff and the community could look at and make a recommendation to the board. The costs for 1A and 1B are for $150,000 to $250,000 for EIR, and that would be projected for the next fiscal year. And then, the costs are the same for option 1C, but we would be potentially looking at additional funds to fund a feasibility study for the fairgrounds relocation. And there's also an additional policy option, which is option two, and that's only to update the community plan and only look at policy changes. No land use changes would be considered under that option. That's one of the options that we recently did with the Granite Bay update, and we've also previously done in Meta Vista. And the cost for that would just be covering staff time. The community plan program has seven phases. There was a draft that was provided for discussion purposes in your staff report, and this is the projected timeframe, two-year program, so we would hopefully be back with an adoption in 2014 to the board. Next step is getting direction from you, and likely a second visit with a final work program, and final direction with a budget, and then we'll begin or continue our information gathering phases, work with the community, the MAC, to form a subcommittee, and look at developing planning documents. So with that, I'm going to wrap up with my conclusion, and we're here to hear your input and get a recommendation on this item.
Any questions from the board on this? Supervisor Wygant.
Some additional comments. Really, a lot of this started with the fact that we had to upgrade the wastewater system to comply with the regulation, which provided an opportunity to add some incremental capacity to Sheridan, not with the vision of it doubling or tripling in size, but any incremental investment up there, new housing, construction, or renovations are a huge improvement and an opportunity. In addition to that, Highway 65 bypass should be complete this next fall, and the impact on the community for some different opportunities up there, perhaps commercial of some sort on the west side of town, just creates for us an opportunity to relook at a very old community plan. By the way, historically, it's the oldest MAC in all of the county, because we provide sewer and water out there, so. So with that, I just huge thanks to SEDRA staff for the work that they've put into us, and Facility Services for the results that we have with the opportunity for something like 100 new potential EDU hookups with sewer and water. So with that, really, just wanted to give you that background.
Thank you. Supervisor Duran.
Yes. On option number C, what would be the cost, actually, two questions. What would be the cost of the feasibility study? And when you say relocate the fairgrounds, what exactly do you mean?
Lauren. Want to cover that, Lauren?
Yeah, there's no firm estimate yet in terms of the feasibility study, and that's an item that we would bring back to the board if the board selected that option. That was our recommendation, is that today is exploratory to get general direction and then come back to the board. Nevertheless, it was an estimate of around $100,000. The focus of the study is really on environmental and infrastructure constraints, and less so on the financial feasibility. The scope of a fairgrounds relocation, we would certainly look to the work that was done in the mid-1990s and bring that information forward, make it more contemporary, make it consistent with the board's objectives today. But I think that is a second dialogue that we would need to have with the board before we went and proceeded with that. The basic goal here is, we have looked at Sunset one time in the past, in 1997. In fact, there's a designation in that area plan for a potential fairgrounds relocation. If in West Placer, we're doing another community plan update, and there appears to be at least the opportunity to examine the feasibility with the Sheridan community plan, we wanted to certainly bring that to the attention of the board as to whether or not that's possible. But I think we'd like to refine that information, bring it back to the board before we actually acted on it.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Please.
Jim Durfee with Facility Services. Relocation of the fairgrounds ultimately is a broad decision. Lot of different moving pieces to that, including the economic viability of the fairgrounds, the compatibility with surrounding neighborhoods, and so forth. I think that the, to add on to what Lauren said, the intent here is simply to evaluate from an environmental standpoint, the feasibility of locating a fairgrounds, that type of an operation within this community plan area. It could potentially end up with zoning that would allow that, and that's as far as this particular effort would go. The actual relocation of a fairground is a much broader, much more complex discussion than simply the environmental review.
In terms of some additional detail, the cost effectiveness of the sewer and water enhancements are most likely to need to stay on the east side of the highway up there. I mean, we could take them across the road, but the cost effectiveness may be prohibitive, so that would all have an impact on this decision. But it's the kind of work I think we need to take a look at and review, and see what options and what desires the board might have.
I see no other questions. So I have a couple myself. First, I wanted to say, I think just generally, the idea of moving this item forward and looking at updating it ties in very much with some of the things that you've talked about, the upgrading of the sewer system, the Safe Rights to School project that we put in last year, I believe it was. You know, clearly, we've made a commitment to the Sheridan area, and I think this will just reaffirm the commitment that they're a valued part of the community. As relates to looking at the potential for cost sharing on relocating the fairgrounds, we talk about stakeholders and other interested parties. Who specifically would we be looking to, to help share that cost?
We certainly are interested in anybody who has the greatest interest, and obviously, one of those parties might be the city of Roseville. That certainly is one option that we would consider. In terms of other stakeholders out there, I don't know that I could even come up with a list, other than the folks who are involved in fairground operations today, such as the Fair Association. Obviously, their participation would be essential. But clearly, in terms of financial partnerships, and looking to another jurisdiction who has the greatest to gain from that relationship with the county, and a feasibility study would certainly be the city of Roseville.
Okay. And then, have conversations been had? Obviously, it would be, we would be moving the fairground out of one supervisory district into another, and have conversations been initiated with both those supervisors to see if that's something that they would support?
Again, this is very preliminary. It was to get general direction from the board today as to whether or not that should be part of a Sheridan community plan update. If the answer to that is yes, then we have a lot more work to do in terms of scoping out that effort, understanding whether or not there is the possibility of cost share, and then developing more precisely a scope of work and cost. So not a great deal of conversation yet, because we need that general direction first.
Okay. All right, thank you. Seeing no other questions from the board, is there anyone in the audience who would like to ask a question or comment on this item? All right, seeing none, what's the pleasure of the board?
Well, I'm pointed towards item 1B or C pending the board's desire to consider the fairgrounds question. So if there's some strong opposition to that, I would strongly encourage we do 1B. You know, I don't know what the opportunity actually is realistically, but I think it's worth looking at. So if the board is inclined that way, I could make a motion for 1C, and we could see what the vote is. Short of that, I would strongly encourage us to go forward with 1B.
Any other comments? Supervisor Duran?
Sure. Being the District One Supervisor and having this discussion, Robert, I would support 1C. I think it's something that we need to look at from a lot of different directions, and I know we haven't really talked about this with SEDRA at all, but if the board has a stomach for $100,000 feasibility study on that, then I, you know, I'd be in support of that.
Well, I'll move that we direct staffs proceed with a Sheridan community plan update regarding, or with focus on alternative 1C.
I have a question.
Supervisor Holmes?
How are we going to pay for the $100,000 feasibility study? Does anybody have an idea?
So we would like to bring back a scope to refine that number. It's an estimate of $100,000 today. We'd also like to report back to the board on the entirety of the scope of a Sheridan community plan update and costs, and we would also like to report back to the board whether or not there is the potential for cost share on that $100,000. If it is solely a cost borne by the county, then it would be a general fund cost.
You okay with that?
Any other questions, clarifications? All right. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries? Thank you. Just a little bit before our first timed item, so we'll move to 7B, Placer County Conservation Plan Planning Agreement Contract Amendments and Corresponding Budget Revision. Mr. Lauren Clark presenting.
Morning, Madam Chair. Again, members of the board, three actions for the board to consider today on the PCCP, somewhat administrative activities, associated work program. The first is an amendment to a document we call the Natural Communities Conservation Plan Planning Agreement. And the second is two actions related to amendment to contracts for three of the consultants working on the PCCP. The planning agreement is a document that was signed by the board in 2001 with three of the agencies involved in the preparation of the PCCP, California Department of Fish and Game, NOAA Fisheries, and the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. It's drawn from a state statute, which is intended to guide the development of natural communities conservation plans. It contains a number of program elements and agreement elements, including definition of the planning area, what are the regulatory goals of the work program, what is the planning process that you will go through, and how to address and deal with projects that come before this board, in the city of Lincoln in this case, during the development of the plan, otherwise known as interim projects. The agreement ran for 10 years. It came up for expiration last year. We've been in a dialogue with wildlife agencies, with the assistance of outside counsel for the past few months, and we're now prepared to bring back to the board that agreement today. We are requesting four additional years over the initial 10 years. No other amendment is really being made to the agreement, other than this extension. As it relates to the contracts, we have a number of consultants who are working on the preparation of the PCCP. Three of the consultants have been spending a lot of time over the past couple of years working with staff in the Ad Hoc Committee on the preparation of the first administrative draft document that went out last February, and then hopefully, another administrative draft document, excuse me, in the summer of 2012. Three of those consultants, TRA Environmental, who is doing the primary work associated with the preparation of the conservation strategy, would receive the largest amount of money via this contract amendment, $250,000. House Rath Economics Group is the county's economist on this, associated with fiscal impact issues and financial issues, as well as population and economic forecasting. That's $25,000. And then lastly, Salix, previously known as North Fork Associates, is primarily working with us on issues dealing with habitat, primarily wetland habitat, and the preparation of documents associated with compliance with the Federal Clean Water Act. That sums up to $311,000. All of those funds will come to Placer County via a federal award, a Section 6 award, as they call it. We have a match obligation that we are already meeting with other encumbered contracts and other duties of the county, so there's no impact to the general fund in terms of this $311,000. There's an additional $39,000 that is not before the board today, that will be available to the county council's office to assist with a cost associated with outside counsel Resources Law Group. But the action today is for the three contractors, as recommended in the staff report. So again, three actions. One is to amend the planning agreement to add additional four years, and then two actions, one amending three contracts, and the second to authorize the chair to sign a budget revision. And with that, I'll answer any questions of the board.
Thank you. Supervisor Wygant?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, your light was on.
Yeah.
I see no questions from our board on this. Anything from any member of the audience on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board. This is a roll call.
Wygant?
Yes.
Duran?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Euler?
Montgomery.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, good timing. At this point, we will move to our first timed item. This is our 9:30 a.m. item. At this point, we will move to our first timed item. This is our 9:30 a.m. item. This is a presentation of commendations. There are two on our agenda today. The first from Supervisor Wiegand, the second from Supervisor Holmes, so I will start with Supervisor Wiegand.
Did you hear from Fowler Nursery here? I think we had a communication issue, so I'm going to defer that.
Thanks.
Okay. That would have been a commendation to Fowler Nursery on their 100-year anniversary, but as they're not here to receive it, we will defer that to a future meeting. So we will move directly to Supervisor Holmes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's my distinct pleasure to present a commendation recognizing Twin Peaks Orchard, and I see we have some representatives from Twin Peaks. If they could come forward, please. That's you, Carol. Just stand at the lectern, please. And the reason I called you up here, because I'm going to need your help pronouncing some of these names.
Okay.
And can you tell me your last name?
Iwaki.
Pardon?
Iwaki.
Okay.
Enricus.
Okay. Thank you. So I'm going to read this, and then I'll bring it down to you. "In the matter of a commendation recognizing Twin Peaks Orchard on their 100-year anniversary and receiving the 2012 Placer-Grown Farmer of the Year Award. Whereas, Twin Peaks Orchard was established in 1912 by Yosha..." This is where I need your help.
Yosha Kiwa.
Pardon?
Yosha Kiwa.
Yosha Kiwa and Tomio?
Tomio.
Tomio Nakai. Got that part right. "When the surrounding Placer County foothills were considered to be the fruit basket of the world, Twins Peak Orchard has for 100 years been family-owned and operated by the Nakai family, using the principles of sustainable farming. And whereas Twin Peaks Orchard is nestled in the foothills of Newcastle..." That's District Three.
Easy now.
"...where the rolling hills, hot days, and cool nights create fruit that is not only rich in sugar, but full of flavor. And whereas Twin Peaks Orchard uses sustainable farming as a holistic approach to growing in the most environmentally friendly manner and not only work their orchards, the fifth generation, generation of their family still lives and plays in them. And whereas, Twin Peaks Orchard handpicked and packed premium..." Handpick and pack premium tree ripe fruit nearly year-round, starting in early May with sweet peaches and floral nectarines, ending the year with a unique mix of persimmons and citrus. And whereas, Twin Peaks Orchard's onsite commercial processing facility is where they produce jams, salsa, sauces, pies, and dried items, using only the highest quality fruits and vegetables. And whereas, Twin Peaks Orchard provides a gourmet fruit lover's dream, where wonderfully delicious aromatic tree-ripened fruit is picked at its optimum maturity to provide a taste and visual sensation like no other. Now therefore be it resolved that the Placer County Board of Supervisors on May 8, 2012, would like to congratulate Twin Peaks Orchard on their 100-year anniversary and winning the prestigious Placer-Grown 2012 Farmer of the Year Award." I'll bring that down. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And while we're waiting, I just want to let everybody know that when the Nakai family came to Placer County, the Holmes family was here to welcome them.
Thank you. Thank you very much, everyone, for having supported us all these years, and with our new adventures that are coming up, oh, we're still there. We're still working on it. Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming today, and congratulations both on your 100th anniversary and your award as Farmer of the Year. That's just fantastic. I know that our Public Information Officer did want to get some additional photos outside in front of the building, so you don't need to feel compelled to stay for the rest of the board meeting if you don't want to, but please do gather outside, and we'll get some additional photos. Thank you. All right. We're a little bit short of our 10:40, which is our next timed item, so we will move to Department Item 8, County Executive Indigent Defense Services. Becky Reagan presenting.
Good morning, Supervisor Montgomery, members of the board. Becky Reagan from the County Executive Office. The item before you this morning is found on page 169 in your board packets, and is a request for board approval and authorization for the interim county executive officer to sign two-year contract extensions with the three law firms that are currently providing public defense services. I'd like to take a quick moment and just introduce the principals from the law firm that are in the audience this morning. Richard Chumow holds the primary contract.
Good morning.
Mark Berg holds the first-level conflict contract. And Tony Carbone and Tim Balcom together hold the second-level conflict contract. And as your board is aware, in Placer County, these services have always been provided through a contract model. Over the years, the county executive office has worked closely with county council's office, with members of the Placer County Superior Court, and directly with the contract providers to ensure that our contracts follow best practices, as outlined by the American Bar Association and other professional organizations, for promoting quality contract public defense programs. Excuse me. Some of these best practices include awarding contracts on qualitative criteria rather than on a cost basis alone, conducting regular oversight and monitoring activities, including contract provisions that allow for supplemental funding for extraordinary cases, and ensuring that defense council's workload does not exceed national caseload standards. It remains the opinion of the county executive office that when these practices are adhered to, contracting with the public sector is the best way to assure constitutionally sound legal representation in the most cost-effective manner possible. Current contracts with these firms were established in July 2006, following a competitive request for proposals process, with an interview panel consisting of county staff and court officials. The panel conducted a thorough evaluation process consistent with county procurement policies, and the panel members agreed unanimously upon the final ranking and selection of these three firms. The 2006 contracts allowed for two extensions, the first running from July 1, 2010, through June 30 of this year, at a total cost of $12,078,000. The second extension before your board today and would run July 1, 2012, through June 30, 2014, at a total cost of $12,186,000. This reflects a total net increase of $107,000 for both years across all three firms to cover costs related to liability and health insurance increases, and technology replacement costs for the primary firm. This modest increase was achievable due to declines system-wide in caseloads over the past few years, most notably in misdemeanor cases and, to a lesser extent, in felonies. This has allowed staffing to remain flat, or in the case of the primary firm, has allowed for reducing a part-time contract attorney to handle family support cases and absorbing the workload back into the office. This caseload decline has also allowed the primary firm to replace a vacant attorney position with a support services specialist, who will assist with client placements and other needs as clients work their way through the criminal justice system. The funding details for both the current contract cycle and for the extension being considered today are summarized in Table 1 on page 171 in your packets. You will notice the funding can vary from the first to the second year with these contracts, and this occurs because we often agree to fund certain things, such as replacing technology that are one-time in nature, and then that drops off in the second year. So to summarize, your board is requested to authorize funding for each of the firms as follows. $9,012,000 for the primary services contract with Richard Chumow and Associates. $2,670,000 for the first-level conflict services contract with the law offices of Mark Berg. And $503,000 for the second-level conflict services contract with the law offices of Balcom and Carbone. And I or any of the principals from the law firms would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions from the board on this item? Supervisor Duran?
Yes, Becky, thank you very much for bringing this forward. I'm just curious, I'm reading the contract back here, item number three, compensation for services. I know that these contracts are fixed, one for $9,012,000, one for $2,670,450, and another one for 503456. The contract reads here, "Should attorney identify a need for additional funding due to a significant sustained increase in cases?" It appears that there can be an increase. Well, what is the history on any increases on these particular contracts?
Actually, we do track those costs, and we pay around, on average, $250,000 to $300,000 a year for those extraordinary services that the law firms do require, and there's a process where the judges review it and authorize it, and then we pay those costs. So that is the safety valve or the relief valve, to make sure that this is not a flat fee contract mechanism, and that is one of the essential approaches to making sure that attorneys have the resources they need to do quality defense work.
And just to clarify, that goes to the judges? They approve that, and then it goes to whom for approval?
It goes to our, well, once we have the approval from the judges, that is the approval that is required, and then we, our fiscal team and the county executive office makes those payments.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
That's all.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Okay. Becky, just to clarify, this is the second of the two, two-year extensions.
That's correct.
Allowed under the contract. So what will happen in two years?
Well, we have, we, it is within our authority to extend the contracts again, if we so chose to do that. We would work with the Superior Court again to, to make sure that they were comfortable with the contract and how things were working, and we would have, your board would have the option to extend the contracts again if they so chose to. We may consider going out for an RFP process at that time.
Okay. Thank you. I see no other questions from the board. Any questions or comments from any members of the audience on this item? Anyone from any of the firms here today want to make any comments on this? All right. Seeing none from the audience, I'll bring it back to the board. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you very much. We'll now move to our second timed item, which is a Board of Supervisors' Presentation of Commendation for Kitty Hollis from Supervisor Holmes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm honored to present this commendation to Kitty Hollis, who has just stepped down from the Older Adult Advisory Commission. And I, it's just a coincidence that I'm the older adult on this board. Although, I'll agree that sometimes I don't act like it. You okay? So I'm honored. I want to read this respectfully. "In the matter of a commendation honoring Kitty Hollis for her dedication to her community and the difference she has made in the lives of the residents of Placer County. Whereas Kitty Hollis has been a lifelong resident of Placer County, where she has raised her children and taught countless numbers of other children during her career as a teacher. And whereas, upon her retirement, she continued her love of teaching and helping others through a variety of other means. Whereas, Kitty was involved in the Placer County Older Adult Advisory Commission, as well as the Area 4 Agency on Aging, where she was part of the process to provide a voice for, a voice in county government as it related to the creation and delivery of services promoting the well-being and quality of life for older adults. Whereas, with Kitty's love of books and learning, it was only natural that she spent much time at the Auburn Library as the Director of Information and Referral Desk, where she helped the public reach needed services such as legal, medical, dental, housing, and recreational opportunities. And whereas, while still at the Auburn Library, Kitty was responsible for developing the original plan for Placer Adult Literacy Service, PALs, to help adults become better readers, and where she wrote grants to obtain funding from the state, from the California State Library. And whereas, Kitty was on the committee at Sierra College that helped develop the Senior Emeritus Program, which enabled individuals 55 and older to attend enrichment classes at no cost to continue their lifelong learning. Now therefore, let it be known that on this day of May 8, 2012, the Placer County Board of Supervisors would like to commend Kitty Hollis on her dedication to her community and the difference she has made in the lives of the residents of Placer County, young and old alike." Thank you. [applause]
Say a few. Just a few, and everybody looks happy. It's okay. I'll wait till you get there.
Okay. Good.
Hello, all of you. I came to many of your meetings in the past, as I worked right across the street, as he said. It was a pleasure to hear what you were doing. I enjoyed every moment of it. Thank you so much. I wish I could come now, but I have to let that go by. Thank you again for this honor. It's a pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kitty, for all your years.
And, Madam Chair, we also have a presentation from the Area 4 Agency on Aging. Deanna Lee and Sue Dings would like to present that to Kitty.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Thank you for this recognition for Kitty. She certainly well deserves it. Kitty and I were talking just a few minutes ago, and, and I think I've known Kitty probably 30 or 40 years, so probably more than many of you have. But Kitty's been a member of our advisory council for years. She's been on our legislative committee, and she's just been, she's always been there, and she's really cared about the citizens of Placer County and our seven counties of Area 4. She was, as mentioned, the Information and Referral Director, funded by the area agency, and she's just been a tremendous stabilizing force. And you know, it doesn't matter if she's happy, or sad, or disappointed. She is one of the most gracious ladies I think I've ever met, and she always maintains a nice smile, and thank you for allowing us to give her, give her this recognition from the area agency on aging.
I'll just read it. It says, "In recognition of many years of dedicated service and advocacy on behalf of older adults, thank you for your valuable contributions to the Area 4 Agency on Aging as an advisory council member."
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming out today, and I believe, Mike, did you want some additional photos out front as well for this? Any, any members or family, friends of Kitty, if you could just join out front there? I think Mike wants to take a few more photos. And thank you all for coming today. All right. At this time, we will move to Department Item 8B, County Auditor Controller. Consideration of Appointment of County Auditor Controller to fill the unexpired term of the office being vacated. Holly Heinz- Holly Hines is presenting.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairwoman. As you all know, the incumbent County Auditor Controller, Kathy Martinez, has submitted her resignation effective May 4, which was Friday, and this creates a vacancy in the auditor controller's elected position. The Board of Supervisors has the authority to fill this vacancy. Historically, such appointments have occurred either as a promotional appointment from within the office, or by a broader recruitment. The Placer County Charter sets forth the process for making this appointment. Under the Placer County Code, the auditor controller that is appointed must meet one of several criteria, including possessing a valid certificate issued by the State Board of Accountancy for, as a CPA, Certified Public Accountant, possesses a baccalaureate degree from an accredited university, or four-year institution with a major in accounting or its equivalent, must have served within the last five years as a senior fiscal management position, in a fiscal, senior fiscal management position in a county, city, or private nonprofit, and that it has been a continuous period of not less than three years. Further criteria include that the person may possess a certificate issued by the Institute of Internal Auditors showing this person to be a designated professional internal auditor. The person has served as a county auditor, or deputy county auditor, or chief assistant for a continuous period of not less than three years. Mr. Andy Sisk, Andrew Sisk, is currently the Assistant Auditor Controller for the County of Placer, and has been serving in this capacity for over nine years. Prior to joining Placer County, Mr. Sisk worked at Macias Genie and O'Connell CPAs for over eight years, and he has 22 years of accounting and auditing experience. Not only does he well meet the criteria as established under the charter in the county code, but he has performed ably in his position as the Assistant County Auditor. Staff is recommending today that the board appoint Mr. Sisk as the County Auditor Controller to serve the remainder of the term as vacated by Catherine Martinez. Should you have any questions, we would be happy to answer them. If you need additional information with respect to the process, we'd be happy to answer those, or maybe Mr. LeBuff would have some comments with regard to that process.
I strongly joined in the recommendation, and I think the process has been outlined. You have a choice to fill the vacancy on this recommendation, or go down a different path. We've done it both ways over the years. But my office strongly endorses the recommendation. Mr. Sisk is an excellent auditor, and I think would make a great elected official.
Supervisor Holmes?
Oh, as a member of the Placer County Audit, to me, I served with Supervisor Duran, and I've worked with Mr. Sisk the last four years, I guess. And I'm impressed with his ability to bring information forward, to present it clearly in a way that even I can understand it. And he's been an able right-hand person for Kathy Martinez in the job as a county auditor. So I would strongly endorse his recommendation.
Supervisor Duran?
I'm going to go ahead and ditto and not repeat what Supervisor Holmes said. Being a detailed guy here, I just have one question, and I think Andy can answer this. With regards to Item C, do you possess a certificate issued by the Institute of Internal Auditors? I didn't see that on...
Just A, B, and D.
Yeah, all right. Okay, all right, I get it. Thank you very much.
Any other comments, questions from the board? Seeing none, I'll open this up to the public. Is there anyone from the public who would like to weigh in on this topic in any way, shape, or form?
Can we just let the retirees speak up?
I'll ask Kitty.
Janine Windushausen, Placer County Treasurer. I hadn't actually prepared anything, but I have been hoping that this would be the, that the board would appoint Andy to fill out the term. I've worked with Andy over the last nine years. He is as competent as anybody that you will find for this position. He has demonstrated his dedication to public service, and I recommend him without any reservation to fill out the term that retiring auditor controller Kathy Martinez has left behind. I can answer any questions if you'd like.
Supervisor Yular, your light is on.
Oh, sorry, I'll turn it back.
Okay. Mr. Sisk, would you like to come forward and say anything to the board and the adoring mouses of the public?
Good morning, Chairwoman Montgomery, members of the Board of Supervisors. First, I want to thank Holly and the members of the board for giving me this tremendous opportunity, and for showing the confidence in my abilities to complete Kathy's term in office. I consider it a privilege and an honor to be the county's auditor controller, and I look forward to serving the citizens of Placer County in that capacity. I'm also truly blessed to have what I believe are some of the most talented employees working for me, and I look forward to leading them through new gazbys, and hopefully, and hopefully not, more things coming from the state legislature, but I doubt, I'm sure there'll be more coming. In closing, I want to thank two women in my life who've made this day possible. First, to our prior auditor controller Kathy Martinez. Wow, what an amazing person. She has been an incredible mentor and friend, and I will eternally be grateful to her for making me the complete professional I am today. She has raised the level of professionalism in our office, and even though she has set the bar high, I plan to do my best to ensure I never slip below that bar. Why? One, because she will be watching. But more importantly, to make her proud of what she has accomplished and what I plan to accomplish in the future. And last, to my beautiful wife, Gabrielle. She has never wavered in her support of my career endeavors, even pushing hers aside a few times, as I develop the tools necessary to become a great CPA, auditor, and eventually public servant. Thank you for being my strongest supporter and best friend these past 22 years. Thank you again for the board for doing this for me today.
Thank you, Andy. All right. What's the pleasure of the board? Supervisor Yular?
Kathy, when you announced your retirement, I alluded to the rather notable job you have done as a department head, working with your staff on succession planning. Andy in front of us today is people's Exhibit A in that work that you've done. It's made for, and will make for, a seamless transition for our board and for the CEO's office, and working with your office. And so I just want to once again publicly acknowledge your work in that regard, your diligence in that regard, and thank you for the time and effort that you put into succession planning in your office. My apologies, by the way, for missing your retirement function. My son's doctor's appointment went far longer than it should have, otherwise I would have made it up here. And in spite of the fact that Supervisor Wigan offered me 20 bucks to nominate him, I will take this opportunity to move approval of the appointment of Andy Sisk as the replacement for Kathy Martinez in the auditor controller's office.
Supervisor Duran, your light is on.
Yeah, I was just going to make another comment, and just say that, you know, part of what our responsibilities are in the Board of Supervisors, to provide the atmosphere for our departments to develop talent. And again, echoing Supervisor Yular's comments about how it's worked out in the auditor controller's office, that's exactly what our responsibility is. So I'm very proud to, again, acknowledge and assist with this transfer of responsibilities.
Supervisor Wigan, your light is on.
Just briefly, thanks, Kathy. Congratulations, Andy. And Kirk, I want my 20 bucks back.
I just, before we vote on this, I want to echo all the words today. Kathy, you did an amazing job, and you did an amazing job raising Andy. So I'm looking forward to working with Mr. Sisk, as we worked so well together over the last couple of years, and really also deeply appreciate the bench that you created within the auditor's office. And it's something we all strive for in the county, just having that depth, so that when people do make choices such as you did to leave the county employment, we have great people ready to step in.
So we have a motion from Supervisor Yular, and I believe a second from Supervisor Holmes. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Congratulations, Mr. Sisk. All right, we will move to our 10 o'clock timed item, which is County Executive, Emergency Services, Rui Cunha presenting on a Community Facilities District Proposal for the Sunset Industrial Area. I'm sorry, Rui Cunha and Chief Brad Harris, also known as the Placer County Fire Warden. I think I got your title right.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. For the record, Rui Cunha, Assistant Director of Emergency Services for Placer County. The item in front of you asks that your board approve a resolution of intention to form a Community Facilities District Number 2012-1 Sunset Industrial Area Services to fund fire protection and emergency medical services within the Sunset Industrial Area. Excuse me? The map that's before you shows the proposed boundaries for the district, once approved by the Board of Supervisors. The boundary for the CFD Number 2012-1 would be contiguous with the current Sunset Industrial Area boundary, and that will be a future annexation area for any property or any project that comes forward within that area in the future. The area that's shown as coming out is the specific project that would form the nucleus of the base Community Facilities District, and that is a project that is currently pending within land development. It is the Magna Pacific Project. It is a four parcel project, and it would in fact be the first component of the Community Facilities District. Today, your action is simply to approve a resolution of intention, and that resolution of intention fundamentally notices the public, and certainly the property owners within this area, of your intent to form this Community Facilities District. Placer County has recognized over a number of years the need for fire service within the Sunset Industrial Area, given the type of development that was anticipated within the SIA. A number of studies were completed in the early 80s, and that led to those conclusions, and essentially determined what an appropriate firefighting force might be within that area. In 1997, the Board of Supervisors approved the Sunset Industrial Area Plan, establishing goals, policies, and implementation that called for an equitable funding mechanism for fire service within the Sunset Industrial Area. In 2003, the United Auburn Indian Community, in conjunction with opening the casino within the Sunset Industrial Area, did in fact bring fire service into the SIA for the very first time. They further expanded that fire service capability by adding a ladder truck with their expansion, adding the hotel in 2009. We now have, in the Sunset Industrial Area, as a result of United Auburn Indian Community's commitment, we now have a firefighting force within the Sunset Industrial Area that provides a very high level of service for that entire community. However, today as we speak, the only ones paying for it are Placer County and the tribe. And realistically, that is contrary to what the board's intentions have been from the very beginning, and this Community Facilities District is intended over time to correct that condition. Currently, the service consists of, under contract with CAL FIRE, consists of seven firefighters on duty 24/7 during the winter months and non-fire season, and during fire season, we add two additional firefighters, for a total of nine firefighters that are on duty 24/7 during fire season. We are staffing a ladder truck, as well as a Type 1 engine and a brush engine, considering the full scope of the hazards that exist within the Sunset Industrial Area and are projected to exist into the future. In 2010, the board unanimously amended the Sunset Industrial Area Plan, and in that amendment, what the board did was the board, one, accounted for the existing services, and accounted for the fact that we now had fire service within the area, but then also established a Community Facilities District as an appropriate funding mechanism into the future to assist in meeting the goals, policies, and implementation that were established both in '97 and then reaffirmed in 2010. The total cost of fire service within the Sunset Industrial Area is just under $3.7 million, and that is an annual cost. We believe that we have, the staff believes that we have brought forward, or are bringing forward to the community, an equitable apportionment of those costs, not only for the Sunset Industrial Area and the tribe, but then also for other future development that we believe will exist adjacent to the Sunset Industrial Area in the future. And through that apportionment, through that cost apportionment, we believe that we're bringing forward as most cost-effective fire service as possible for that very, very important area for Placer County. The, after the apportionment is complete, the greater Sunset Industrial Area is apportioned a cost of about $1.9 million. And that apportionment, it, once you remove the base property tax that's expected in the future, ultimately results in a requirement to raise $1.6 million in total revenues through this Community Facilities District into the future. That $1.6 million is attributed not only to future development, but to existing development, and that's important for the board to understand. There isn't any way in a Community Facilities District for services to ultimately recoup or have current development annexed into the Community Facilities District, unless they volunteer, and will certainly ask. But if they choose not to volunteer to annex into the Community Facilities District, we will have a net deficit within the Sunset Industrial Area going forward, as far as we can tell. But in general, what we believe, is we believe very strongly that this Community Facilities District will in fact, and the charges that have been laid out in the engineering report, will in fact come very close to meeting the needs that are laid out for fire service going forward. We've accomplished a number of tasks to get here. Obviously, we've completed engineering reports, we've conducted a number of community meetings, we've spoken to property owners, we've done direct mailings to inform property owners of what we're doing out here. Most recently, we did have an opportunity to present this to the Bond Screening Committee, and the Bond Screening Committee unanimously approved this going forward to the board for a recommendation. We are now at the point of asking your board to approve a resolution of intention. Following your board's action, and with favorable action, we'll move forward with a ballot and waiver initiative for the Magna Pacific Project specifically, and we'll finish up by coming back to your board on June 9. by coming back to your board on June 19th for a public hearing and your board's approval, or we'll ask your board to consider the actual formation of the CFD at that time. Subject, any questions that you might have? That concludes my formal presentation. Chief Harris, anything you'd like to add?
Well, under the leadership of this board and the Tribal Council, we provide a very well-trained, very well-staffed fire protection system in the Sunset Industrial Area. Before you, we have our plan to more equitably distribute it amongst the end-users in that general area. I'm confident, given the staffing that we have, the equipment we have, and the training that we have, have provided our firefighters in that station that we can handle any emergency that comes up, and it's a very complex area. It contains probably the tallest building in Placer County, one of the very few high-rises that exist in Placer County, which is a motel, which is always a complex fire and rescue scenario for us in the event of a fire. But again, under the leadership of this board and under the leadership of the United Auburn Indian Community Tribal Council, we've been able to meet that need, and I'm very confident that if we do have an emergency in there, that we're able to contain it very quickly.
Thank you. Holly, your lead is on. Supervisor Yular?
Yes. When we met yesterday, I asked you the question about the residents that might be built in this area and the fee that would be imposed associated with that. Do we have an answer on that question?
Right, and for a property owner who owns a parcel, whatever the size of that parcel is, the drawing of a building permit is a ministerial action that would not be subject to conditioning under this Community Facilities District. The only way that we would in fact bring residential into, and the study does account for some residential development within the Sunset Industrial Area, the only way that that will occur is if in fact any given parcel owner chooses to do some sort of development within their parcel. They've got to bring forward a map, and as a result, that development would be conditioned. But for a single property owner who wants to build a home and draw a building permit, we do not have the ability under the ministerial conditions associated with drawing a building permit to condition that single property owner to annex into the CFD.
Okay, so, and my question yesterday was along the lines of what triggers an annexation into the district and requires that this fee start being collected? And the example that I gave was I own an 80-acre parcel, it's in the Sunset Industrial Area, I want to build a house on it. Based on our formula, which is the greater of either the cost per square foot or the cost per acre, you know, an 80-acre parcel is going to trigger a $56,000 a year fire fee if I all of a sudden get hit with it. So to be clear, what my concern is, those activities that would go on under individual owner occupant, knowing that a large part of the Sunset Industrial Area is agriculturally zoned, I have my agricultural equipment that I house in a barn, I work on it, I do those things, nothing like that triggers this kind of fee.
That is correct.
When you say it's only development, what I hear when I say, when I hear somebody say it's only development means it's the processing of a map that requires additional entitlements beyond what rides with the zoning on the property.
That's correct.
Okay. We'll just hate to find ourselves in a position where somebody comes in and says, "I'm on $56,000 a year for my house." All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Supervisor Wigan? Supervisor Holmes?
Well, I just wanted to make sure that we thank the United Auburn Indian Community and the Thunder Valley Casino Resort for their participation in providing fire protection service in the Sunset Industrial Area, particularly the casino.
Thank you.
Any members of the public want to comment or ask any questions on this item? All right, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board. What's the pleasure of the board?
A staff recommendation.
All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Chief Harris, don't go anywhere. You are up next with our departmental item number nine, update on the 2012 fire season and fire prevention on BOR lands.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. Yesterday, Governor Brown and Director Ken Pimlock kicked off the annual Wildland Fire Awareness Week, so I'd like to take this opportunity to update you on where we are locally with our potential fire season, with the things that we've got going on. This will be my 35th consecutive fire season. To say that it's going to be the worst one in history has kind of lost flavor over the years, so what I would really like to do is tell you exactly what's going on out there and what my concerns are with the upcoming fire season. Let's talk a little bit about the history of our weather. For the last three years, we've seen relatively mild fire seasons, we've seen very wet winters. Last year particularly, we saw a very wet winter, very long winter with low snowfalls. What that did for us was cause a great deal of snowkill. As the heavy snows came down, temperatures started to warm, trees and brush were shearing off, which didn't really affect us all that much last year because we also had a very mild summer, but those fuels stayed out there. So, right now, between the elevations of 1,500 feet and 4,500 feet, we have a good deal of dead and down material that has been sitting there for a year drying. This last winter was a very dry winter for us. Up until February of this year, we saw very little rainfall, and when we did get our rainfall, we got it in torrents. So it didn't really soak into the ground, but we did get some rainfall. As a result, this year, going into, some of the things that I look at as a fire control officer going into the fire season, our snowpack is at 55%. When I looked at the crop report recently for the amount of hay and feed that's available for livestock out there, even with the torrential rains that we saw in March and a little bit into April, the grasses are only at 50%, so farmers are going to have to buy hay. What that tells me as a firefighter is that those fuels are very light, very sparse, and when they dry, when they cure, they were going to have very fast, very, very quickly moving fires because of the way that the fuels are spaced out there right now. So the potential for us to have fires is going to be there. It's going to be dependent upon weather. The other factor that I'm always concerned about is our ability to respond. Because of budgetary constraints over the last several years, our ability to respond has been reduced by about 20%. Local government has seen a reduction in their forces due to budgetary cuts by at least that amount, which means that there's that many fewer pieces of apparatus available for us to respond. So as we go into this fire season, my concern is the abundance of fuel that we have out there and the reduction in response resources that we have available to us. So something we'll be keeping our eye on, and I can tell you how fire season went and how bad it was in about six months from now, but for me to try and predict what it is going to be, I think we've all seen that before and it doesn't really work. But we do have the potential out there. There are some factors that are lining up against us, we're going to keep an eye on it. What we're going to ask of our constituents and our citizens is that they help us out, and the best way that they can help us out is provide us with that defensible space that we need in order for our firefighters to get in there and safely defend their properties. They're the first line of defense, the fire departments and CAL FIRE are the second line of defense. We're the ones that can get in there and do some effective work, providing that the homeowner has given us that buffer so that we can make that happen. And we're hoping that we have a successful fire season this year, but I will be keeping the board updated as the fire season goes along and any fires that occur within your district. I hope to see you out there and we'll do the drive around the fire and explain what's going on. Supervisor Wigan survived one of those with me already, so it can be an exciting time. As far as the Bureau of Reclamation, one of my highest areas of concern in the Nevada-Uba Placer unit is the canyons, particularly the American River Canyon. In 2008, we ended a 30-year contract with the Bureau of Reclamation. Bureau of Reclamation withdrew from the contract. That contract gave us the ability to fund fire suppression coming out of the, or for fires that occurred within the canyon, but it also gave us the ability to do fuels reduction in the canyon itself. 2008, when the contract ended, it left us with a huge hole in those two areas. First of all, how do we prevent fires? How do we do fuel reduction? But how do we fund fires or pay for local government's response into those areas when fires do occur? We quickly developed a system that allowed us to fund the fires that occurred in that. CAL FIRE took the lead. We actually fronted the money for any fires that occurred there and then billed BOR, and they paid for the fires that occurred. So that system was in place, but the hole that we had, and probably the most important hole that we had, was our inability to do fuels reduction in the canyon itself. Supervisors Montgomery and Holmes have been working tirelessly with the Bureau of Reclamation to help bring forward a solution to that problem, along with a relative of Supervisor Holmes, Councilman Mike Holmes, from the city of Auburn. So we've been working very hard to come up with a solution to our problem. Up until recently, it didn't seem like a solution was in the offing, just no way for us to have the ability to go in and do fuels reduction in the canyon itself. We've recently had a turnaround in events due to some pressures that have been applied by this board and by the legislature and both federal and state government, and we are now working towards a contract that will allow us to act as labor for Bureau of Reclamation on projects that they deem fit, that they wish to accomplish in there. So a huge step forward for us. We look forward to the completion of that contract and having the ability to do the fuels reduction to provide further fire safety for the communities that live along the rim of the canyon there. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Supervisor Holmes?
Thank you for that presentation. I think this is appropriate time to give a shout-out for Measure D in North Auburn-Oper Fire. What you just said is, you know, the resources are diminishing, and we need to have these residents step up to provide a level of service, particularly for North Auburn, which Station 80 on Atwood Road is the busiest fire station in the unincorporated area of Placer County. We don't have to look back too far to see what can happen if, you know, the 49 fire August of 2009 certainly sent home that message to us. So hopefully, those that were out there listening to this will take that into consideration and support Measure D on their ballot in June. Thank you.
I see now there are comments or questions from the board. Let me just echo Supervisor Holmes' words and also just reiterate how important this is to rim communities, particularly Colfax, Forest Hill, and certainly the city of Auburn. We've had great partnerships working with members of the city of Auburn, both their city council members and also the fire safe councils, in putting that pressure on our state and federal partners. And Chief Harris, you've been instrumental in that as well, and I really want to thank you because this is an absolutely critical issue for all the rim communities. And just please, keep us posted on the progress of those talks. I hope the next conversation we have is, Jennifer, we have a signed contract, so...
I look forward to that. I think it's very close, but again, I cannot thank both yourself and Supervisor Holmes for the work you did. Without your help, without the help of Councilman Holmes in the city of Auburn, I don't think we would have been nearly as successful as we are right now.
Thank you, and I think that will really accrue to the benefit ultimately of Colfax, Forest Hill, Auburn, and the North Auburn community as well. All right, we don't need to take any action on this, so unless there's any members of the audience who would like to comment or ask any questions on this item, we'll move on to our next item. All right? Thank you very much. Let's move on to item 10, departmental item 10, Facility Services, Western Placer Regional Sewer Project. Bill Zimmerman presenting.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. We're here this morning to ask your board to adopt a resolution authorizing the chair to sign an advance payment agreement with the city of Lincoln that will provide up to $1 million in funding for Lincoln to proceed with the design and environmental work associated with the Lincoln offer for the regional sewer project. We're also asking you to approve a budget revision transferring $4 million in appropriations from the SMD-1 Upgrade Project Capital Project Budget to the SMD-1 Regional Sewer Capital Project Budget, and that will provide funding for expenditures related to the Midwestern Placer Regional Sewer Project. Back in March, your board elected to move forward with the city of Lincoln's offer to complete the regional sewer project and directed staff to negotiate an agreement for the design and environmental review of that project. We're actively negotiating and drafting that agreement, and we anticipate having that back to your board for consideration in June. As you're aware, we have some very tight timelines associated with the project, both in terms of overall completion and our permit compliance dates, as well as some shorter-term timelines associated with being able to transfer the SRF funding from the upgrade project to the regional project. And so as an initial step to allow that design and environmental work to proceed, while we negotiate the design and environmental review agreement, our department reallocated about $300,000 from an agreement with ICF Jones &amp; Stokes to start that work, and we estimate that that funding will take us through early May, which is about now. In order to allow that work to continue until we bring the design and environmental review agreement back to your board for consideration, we have developed the advance payment agreement that we have before you this morning, and a couple of points that I would like to make, a couple of things I'd like to point out about the agreement, is that it's only associated with work included in Lincoln's offer for the regional sewer project, and that we will be tracking those costs, and as we negotiate the design and environmental review agreement, we'll be negotiating a credit back for those costs. And so with that as background, we're asking your board this morning to adopt the resolution included in our staff report and also to approve the budget revision included in our staff report. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Supervisor Holmes?
Bill, the $4 million that we're advancing, is that going to be going to Lincoln in whole, or is that going to be, we're going to pay for the work as it goes along?
The advance payment agreement is for $1 million. The $4 million in the budget revision is to fund that work plus additional work that will come through the design and environmental review agreement. We will, Lincoln will invoice us for that work based on work they've completed, so it'll be kind of a pay-as-you-go process, not an upfront lump-sum payment to Lincoln.
Okay, great. Just so the board is aware, I've had, my office has had several phone calls from people in the Oper area. Last week, I was standing in the living room with several residents out there that wanted to know what the heck was going on, where is this pipeline going to go, and I tried to answer their questions as best I could. I know Bill is going to be, or Bruce is going to be presenting to the North Auburn MAC tonight. He'll be at the Newcastle-Oper MAC, but the citizens out there have also requested a community meeting, which will be held May the 14th out at the Oper Fire Station, to answer any questions and to kind of give an explanation of what's going on. So my office has been filled with requests from many people that live in that area about how this is going to roll out. So it's very important, I know this, we all know that this wasn't a unanimous decision on the Board of Supervisors, but we need to make sure that this moves forward in a clear and direct way, and that's what I want to see happen.
And we're happy to participate that and give you whatever support we can.
Thank you.
Supervisor Duran?
Yes, question, you had kind of mentioned very briefly about oversight. One of the things that I'm concerned about, obviously, are costs of the project. Within this design and environmental review agreement... Within this design and environmental review agreement, is there any type of an oversight committee contemplated to kind of oversee, not necessarily the environmental review process, but post that when we start getting into a more construction phase or pre-construction phase? Some type of a committee comprised of some folks that can oversee and review value engineering considerations and those kinds of things as we move forward?
Right now, we are meeting weekly as a project coordination team to oversee the design, to oversee the environmental, and the more technical aspects of the project. I think probably the best way for me to, and we'll continue to do that as we work through the project, we've also, your board approved this morning on the consent agenda contracts for an engineering firm and an environmental firm to help us with that, with that oversight. But I think the best way for me to answer your question is that the way the agreement will be structured is that Lincoln will provide us a, at one point, it was called a firm cost, we've kind of backed off that a little bit, but there will be, we will have a set cost for the design and the environmental piece of it, and then we will negotiate a set cost for the construction piece of the project. And, you know, certainly, if something changes, there will be contingencies built into that project that we'll be able to account for that. And so I think moving forward, at least at this point in the structure of the agreement, I'm pretty comfortable that those assurances or that oversight is there.
Okay.
County Council?
Yeah, Supervisor Duran, following up on your comments, I'd like to remind the board that when this matter was approved, I indicated in a small portion of the memo that the county council's office would be coming forward with additional requests for assistance, and I plan on the 22nd of May to bring forward an item for outside counsel. What we've done is structured this, sort of to keep up. Facility Service started out of the gate in January, February, funding money from existing funds. The agreement for you is sort of to keep that process moving forward. The next agreement, the design environmental review, is to not waste a year of contract negotiation time while we need to move forward on the project. But ultimately, there's going to be a long series of agreements which will have those kind of assurances, I think, built into them. And frankly, one of the reasons we'll be bringing forward the contracts on the 22nd is because of staffing problems in the county council's office created by vacancies assumed to be vacancies. We just can't keep up with the workload right now. But I think those have always been in our mind as issues, and I don't think Lincoln's ever disagreed. It's been on Lincoln's proposals from the beginning, too, is that there need to be a clearinghouse to solve these issues.
Holly?
Yes, if I might add here, in reference to your question Supervisor Duran, just so you know, basically, the county executive office, along with Facility Services and our members from the board on the Regional Sewer Committee have continued to meet along with staff, and we've really organized into teams in terms of engineering, financial, and legal issues. That group has been meeting every two to three weeks, I would say, and will continue to do so to monitor the progress in each of those areas and provide some coordination and reporting to our board members. Part of that group is a financial team that also will be looking at how, not only the financing in terms of the long run with the city of Auburn and Lincoln and our own SMD-1, but monitoring how those expenditures are made within the firm price agreement. So it's an ongoing structure that we've adopted, really, to provide this overall coordination and these fortified disciplines. So we will also be keeping your board apprised of progress on each of those and doing interim progress reports. The city of Lincoln has provided that and agreed to continue to provide those, and we're refining those as we speak, and we'll keep you informed as those things progress.
Thank you.
Supervisor Holmes.
Oh, Supervisor Duran, I just want to assure you that there will be a citizens committee overlooking this project, particularly the people that live in the area where the pipeline is proposed to go, and that was pretty direct from when my meeting last week with them, and I'm sure that there'll be more coming forward on May the 13th when we meet out at the Oper Fire Station.
I would actually like to echo Supervisor Holmes' words. I was at an Eagle Scout Court of Honor ceremony and had a number of people come up to me and say, hey, I'm really concerned about this route. There was some guy wandering around my property telling me that the pipeline's going to be going through it potentially. And it's very high on people's radar, so we need to make sure that it's not just the MACs, that these discussions are held, but very, been very robust, public communications continue. There is a very high level of what I would term angst about where the pipeline route may or may not end up. And while that's not specific to this item today, I just wanted to take the opportunity to say that's going to be very high on my radar as well, that we make sure we do that outreach to folks, both from the city and from the county side of this equation. While we're on this general topic, I'd also like to ask that at some point in the reasonably near future, we get a report back to our board as to where the discussions stand with the city of Auburn and their level of participation in this project or not. I just think we should be kept updated on a fairly routine basis on those discussions so that nothing takes us by surprise. Those are my comments on this. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to comment or ask any questions on this? Bruce, was there anything you wanted to add?
Bruce Barnworth, city of Lincoln. Maybe I could just add a little bit. We mirror the concern about working with property owners, and we've gone out there, I've gone out there personally and talked to more than 30 property owners. In some cases, there are some loose ends where we've talked to them once, we need to go back and talk to them again, and we will be doing that. We've also sent out letters after getting review from the city of Link, city of Auburn and from the county to 20, 2,000 people in that area, covered basically 3,000 feet from any proposed pipeline, just to make sure that we've covered everybody. We've gotten back some response from that. It's been fairly limited, about eight people, I think, have called or sent email messages back in. But we see that the public and the community as being partners in this project, just as the county and the city of Auburn hopefully will be. And so if you have any questions or any concerns, feel free to give me a call, and I'd be glad to address those.
While I have you then, the one very specific concern that two different constituents raised, and they asked me to pass them along to the city because you'll be ultimately putting the contracts together for the construction companies moving forward, is some sort of bonding for broken windshields. There's a great deal of concern, apparently, about construction traffic kicking up gravel and rocks on the roads, in the rural road areas, that this pipeline will be moving forward, and there was a request that some sort of bond be imposed upon the construction companies to cover that potential damage. I've now done my duty and passed that along to you, and I'm sure we can talk about that in the future. Supervisor Holmes?
Oh, I just wanted to make a point about the public outreach. RPIO Office has worked with my aide Ruth Alves, and I believe Jocelyn Maddox, your aide, to make sure that the public outreach is detailed and as accurate as can be.
Absolutely. We'll just have to continue to work together on that. Supervisor Euler?
Yeah, well, obviously, the public outreach component is important. I think it's safe to say, and would be important for us to begin reinforcing right now, that given the rather tight time constraints under which this project will be operating, there's a difference between public outreach and negotiation. When it is determined what the pipeline alignment needs to be, we're going to have to act, and we're going to have to act rapidly to secure the right-of-way for that pipeline, and there's not going to be a lot of negotiation. We simply don't have the time if we're going to bring this project in and meet our requirements under what's negotiated with our permits. So while, yes, it's important to keep folks informed that this project is moving forward, it's also important to properly set expectations early on that there's not a whole lot of room to maneuver in this project.
Thank you for reinforcing that. I think that's a valuable thing for the community to hear, as well as our board.
If I could make one point regarding that, and it's very important to understand that the project, as the city of Lincoln proposed, can be 100% within public roads. That is our fallback. We can have the pipeline be completely within public roads and not go across private property. We are trying to mutually arrive at something that is acceptable to the project and acceptable to the property owner if we can find, and we're looking at alternative routes that would be shorter and less costly, and in some cases, better environmentally, and also provide some payment to the property owners. If that can be provided and done in a way that's mutually beneficial, then we'll move that way. If not, we'll keep the pipeline in the road right-of-way.
Thank you. Supervisor Holmes?
So any payment to property owners that comes out of the firm price?
Yes.
Any members of the public want to comment on this? All right, seeing none, I'll bring this back to the board. This is a roll call, and what's the pleasure of the board?
Wygant? Duran? Holmes? Euler? Montgomery?
Yes. All right, at this point, we will move on to our 10:30 timed item. Sheriff's Department, Janice Gage presenting.
Good morning, Chair Montgomery, members of the board. Janice Gage with the Placer County Sheriff's Office. And also with me this morning, I'd like to introduce Lieutenant Darrell Steinhour, Court Security Lieutenant, and Jake Chatters, who is the Placer County Superior Court Administrator. This is our annual request to your board for approval of a memorandum of understanding between the sheriff's office and the Placer County Superior Court. It is a two-year memorandum, July 1st, 2011 through June 30th, 2013. Total funding for both years is $3,812,705. The funds are derived from the 2011 Budget Act realignment funding, and since 1999, our office has maintained a memorandum of understanding with the courts to provide court security services. Our staff confers with the court administrator and his staff on a monthly basis, and through these ongoing discussions and comprehensive mid-year review of security services, we are able to arrive at this overarching agreement and understandings that are developed and folded into a comprehensive MOU. Statute precludes a pass-through of certain charges such as administration fees overhead and some of our staff training, retiree benefits. Those costs are covered within our sheriff's office budget. Should additional funds become available, we're still waiting for the May revise, but should they become available, we will again confer with the court administrator and his staff to arrive at adjustments in this memorandum of understanding services. With that, we do request your approval of this MOU, and I'm happy to answer any questions, and also Lieutenant Steinhour and Jake Chatters are here to answer your questions as well.
Thank you, Janice. Any questions from the board? I see none. Anyone in the audience want to comment or ask any questions on this item? Is there anything that either of you gentlemen wanted to add to this? Okay, I'll bring it back to the board. What's the pleasure of the board? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we will move on to Departmental Item 11, Public Works, CAL-Trans Cooperative Agreement, Alpine Meadows Road and State Route 89. You are not Peter Kratz.
I'm not. I'm Matt Randall, a senior engineer with the Public Works Department, Chairman Montgomery, board members. Good morning. Yes, this morning, we're asking you to adopt a resolution authorizing our director to enter into and execute a co-op agreement with CAL-Trans with county council, review and approval. And with this agreement, we would receive, the county would receive $874,000 for construction improvements of the intersection of Alpine Meadows Road and State Route 89. And just a couple of highlights with this item, the funding depends on bid savings that the state will realize from their current projects. And so the funding is actually, comes from the state shop, their maintenance program. And this funding, because it's state funding, requires CTC approval after the bid savings at either the May or June meeting. And so what this agreement will do is allow us, allow the state to fund these intersection improvements, which includes some turning lanes and paving, and the Signal at Alpine Meadows Road, and which will, part of those improvements will be required as part of the bridge project, getting our encroachment permit. So the intention of this is to build all these improvements with our bridge replacement project. So with that, just open it up to questions.
Any questions on this item from the board? Supervisor Duran?
Yeah, how long is it going to take you to get that encroachment permit? What's the timetable?
The timetable is that we're expecting it before we finish our plans and specifications and all of our bid package before next year. So we're actually, we've started the process with them, and they've reviewed some of our preliminary plans, and that's where some of the estimate comes from, so, yeah, so before we go to construction, either in 2014 or next year.
Matt, on this project, and this is in conjunction with the bridge project, as you mentioned, and the bridge is going to be slightly realigned, is that correct?
Yeah, it's slightly. It's pretty much centered on the existing alignment, so, yeah.
There is a little bit of local concern about adding an additional stoplight on Highway 89. Were alternatives looked at for the intersections such as roundabouts or something along those lines?
Yeah, we did. We looked at some other alternatives, and actually, we discussed it at the HOA meeting. We looked at a roundabout, and we looked at a signal, and we did a traffic study as well, and it turned out that the roundabout was going to be more costly than the intersection. And so that was part of the reason why we went with a signal, which was already approved as part of the original CAL-Trans project report. And we did actually reach out at the North Tahoe, the Knit Rack, too, as well. And so, you know, we didn't hear any concern there, but that doesn't mean that there aren't some concerns, because I know that Tahoe roundabouts are a popular thing. But I think ultimately, it came down to an issue of construction money and was the money available, and this is, the signal was more fundable. Does that answer your question?
It does, and where the concern was generated, frankly, is the fact that that's a known avalanche zone right there, and the concern is if traffic is stopped at a light, there's a, the feeling is that there's a higher risk for people in vehicles to potentially be trapped, whereas if traffic is continuing to move through a roundabout, that might partially be offset. I am not a traffic engineer, I can't tell you if one increases a risk of being trapped in an avalanche or not, but did we look at the avalanche risk for that area, or did CAL-Trans?
Well, yeah, I can be sure. Do you want to help with this one? Do you want me to go first, or you? Yeah, I have an answer to you, but, yeah.
Sorry to throw a wrench in the works.
No, no.
Good question. The official avalanche corridors are a little bit further up the road. Part of the process is, there's really only a few days out of the year where there's a big issue. It's letting out off the ski hill is the big one coming off the hill. Otherwise, there's not a problem whatsoever. The roundabout had some real positives in that regard, but in general, it was much more expensive, very large footprint to accommodate the speeds on Highway 89, and with the river right behind. It was environmentally very challenging to consider that and not to mention the costliness of it. We feel very comfortable there won't be any problem, and in an emergency, people are going to be able to get down, not any worse than what they are today with no signal at all.
Right.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. Any other questions from the board? Any member of the audience want to comment on this? All right, I'll bring it back to the board. What's the pleasure of the board? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. We'll move on to 11B, Cook Riola Bridge, Cook Riola Road Bridge Replacement Project. Ken Grimm presenting.
Ken Grimm, again, with the Department of Public Works. Today, we're asking you to adopt a resolution approving a contract with Somus Inc. of Roseville for the construction management, inspection, material testing, and related services for the construction management, inspection, material testing, and related services for the Cook Riolo Bridge Replacement Project in an amount of $850,029. In addition to that, we're asking you to authorize the Director of Public Works to enter into future contract change orders up to an amount of $100,000. The reason we're asking, that's actually a little bit more than what we usually ask for. The reason for that is this project, we hope and intend to get done in two construction seasons. But because of the complexity of it, depending on the weather, particularly during the winters, and how much we get done before the winter, how much we get down through the, or how much we can get done through the winter, it could go into a third season. We want to be able to have that ability. If it does, it's going to be because of the contractor's operations. But we are proposing to replace the existing bridge on Cook Riolo Road. The county issued an RFP for these services. We got, what, quite a few proposals, but Somus of Roseville was the number-one rated firm. It's important to note, your board approved the construction contract for the Cook Riolo Bridge at your last meeting to MCM Construction. So between that contract and this contract, we are ready to get started on the work. In fact, there are utility companies for the last several weeks that have been out there already relocating their facilities, getting everything prepped for us to be able to get out there probably next month, early June. And so with that, we're asking you to approve the contract with Somus, and we'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Supervisor Holmes?
Yeah, Ken, just under fiscal impact, the county roads funds and fee mitigation programs, it's between 11.47% and 20%, what, in generally, it's?
Yeah. This project was started approximately close to 10 years ago. When the project was first started under the design, it was reimbursed at the rate of 80%. We put in 20, the federal government put in 80. Since the right-of-way and the construction, they have improved the program. And now it is reimbursed at the rate of 88.53%. And so for the construction, including the construction contract and this contract, we will be reimbursed 88.53%. So it's a blended rate for the entire project over the span of several years.
Okay, great, thank you.
I see no other questions from the board. Any member of the audience like to comment on this? All right, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board. What's the pleasure of the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. That will take us to 11C, Qualified List of Environmental Services Firms and Blanket Purchase Order Contracts for Environmental Services. Matt Randall presenting.
That's me with Public Works. So with this item, we're asking you to adopt a resolution approving a list of qualified firms and award blanket purchase order agreement contracts to the top six ranked firms for our public works projects in the county, and the maximum amount of $225,000 per contract, not to exceed a total combined amount of $1,350,000. And then, we're asking you to authorize the purchasing manager to sign and execute these BPO contracts with risk management and County Council approval, and to transfer funds between BPO contracts as needed. So like the last item, we did a solicitation with the procurement services department for these environmental services, and we got a very, a very good response. 20, 20-something firms, 170 firms were notified, and we got numerous responses. And then the panel ranked the top six firms, and just for your reference there in the package, but it's Sycamore, North State Resources, Doc and Engineering, LSA Associates, ICF International, and PMC. And so this list is intended to replace the list that just expired in March, earlier of March this year, and these BPOs will be used for, mostly for our federal aid, bridge and roadway projects. And so that was part of the criteria in ranking the firms. With that, just open it up to questions.
I see no questions from the board. I will note that we had, it looks like seven Placer County firms applied, and one made it into the top six. Is that correct?
That sounds right, yeah.
Okay. I see no questions from the board. I see no one in the audience who probably wants to comment at this point, so I'll bring it back to the board. What's the pleasure of the board?
[inaudible]
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you very much, Matt. Thank you, Ken. At this time, we'll move to our final departmental item, which is County Council.
The board will go into closed session and take up the items on page four, item 12.
There's one litigation matter, a discussion with the board in labor negotiations for PPEO discussions, and a continuing discussion with regards to the County Executive Officer recruitment. We will report back later.
Thank you.